And to the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God and in this law. One state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, this time any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Is there anybody who'd like to speak? Okay. Um, presentation and discussion Department Head Committee and Board of Reports. Have you seen anything with any issues on those?
I would like to add one thing if it's alright.
Sure.
I searched back in all the stuff that I could go through, moved around and stuff and can't find it. When did it come? If anybody in the court knows, anybody out there know? Uh, when did it come? That? Uh, precinct two? And I suppose precinct one? I mean, how four employees, four town? Anybody tell me that?
Well, there's what, miles of precincts?
It's supposed to be miles of road per, somebody has per miles of road.
They can't do it.
Cause four has the most miles of road on infrastructure.
No, they're pretty well even.
I don't know that statue, but it, but it was down the road.
I, I don't think that it's, that you can't do it, it's that you have to budget for it and then agree to do it.
I don't understand why. You know, unless you just can get yours done, uh, maybe cause you've got full-time hands wherever I'm, uh, messing with.
Part-time.
Part-time, long time. Uh, because I can't find full-time. The... You know, I run on the taxpayer's money, saving them money. But, I don't want precinct two, you know, I'll stick yours in there, to suffer anyway in getting their jobs done. Or not having enough hands.
That's something I can look into and see if we can figure out why there's a difference in that. I'll look, I don't know that.
Well, I've always heard the roads, the roads had something to do with, well, like say, there is not that much difference between these three right here. And, uh, uh, you know, uh, as hard as hands are to find now, but I've kept that with that one right there. I have, I'm finally getting some applications coming in all right. Uh, but then, if you don't watch it, if, and if I take too much time, here we tell it. Last year, I sat and watched before I went in office, uh, most folks taking their vacation right at the end of the year, year. Well, now men can come along and say, well, that's because there's not that much to do. Well, right and wrong. If there is something comes along and you ain't got no way to do it, then your people are suffering, uh, uh, when they shouldn't be. So, uh, but like I say, I just, uh, before I jump out there and do something, I wanted to know if there was a certain reason other than what I've come up with. It didn't make no sense.
Okay, well, let me research that and I'll, I'll see what I can find for you.
Yeah.
Bring it to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, any discussion on the, uh, Department Head Committee and Board of Reports?
I would agree.
You need to vote on that or not? Uh, court to discuss and to consider action to be taken following open and score for consider approval of previous court minutes. There's two on that, so.
I would mention that we accept them as written.
All in favor? If precinct project scheduling staffing, this is the time of the, uh, if y'all have anything to discuss?
I should have discussed it then.
We're alright, we're okay.
Yeah, you can slap an ear once, bro.
Yeah. Is there anything else that needs to be discussed between y'all? Really wicked.
Yeah, yeah.
We got planted.
We got terrible road over there, well, the transmission line down probably.
Heard about that.
Hey, that was worse.
Wow. Long time.
Blowing roads on the can, blowing barages and same old stuff every day.
Yes.
Basically, who was it?
Sometimes it's too wet.
Sure.
Too wet.
But that is it? Did they get more over there than what that right here?
We've got nearly three inches. Oh, like they always seem like they do, not through precinct, four seats to be like, I don't know, what, three or four inches long? For it lasts three or four times, five or six times, it stays wet out there.
No road, no water.
It's rice time. All the tannins.
All right, will consider accepting donations to county units.
We haven't received any from any of the departments, just not yet. Of course, a lot of them are just finishing up their monthly paperwork from me, cause this is, so.
Okay. Uh, court to consider approval of sign-ins, submit a request for unclaimed property capital credits counties issued by the state comptroller's office.
Ms. One, do you have the original? Uh, I gave it to Cynthia, put it in the packet. I may have to bring it from the email. Um, we have to submit, there's a form that I get from the Texas comptroller's office that we can, the, y'all have to authorize for us to request any capital credits back to us that are from electric companies, things like that, unclaimed from our area.
Is it pretty much usually?
Um, it depends, it could be up to three thousand dollars, which isn't a lot in our big scheme of things, but you know, three thousand dollars when you have that thing, it's a lot.
I'll need to let it go back to the state.
Right.
We know what they do.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm looking for you to approve the sign and to get a request for unclaimed property capital credits.
And allow the judge to sign it?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
I'll bring that by, um, your office later.
All right, we're gonna hear the presentation of two thousand eighteen, two thousand eighteen audit by Conley Company.
I'm gonna come up here since I have several documents just right out here.
Absolutely.
Uh, I'm Aaron Miller, like you said, from Conley Company, and we completed the audit for two thousand eighteen. Uh, I've passed out, should have three things in front of you, this thing of the slide that I'm gonna go over. The thick bound document is the actual audit report, and then that skinnier bound document is just another required communication required to, uh, to go over, which I'll, which I'll touch on in the slides. Uh, I'm gonna get right in, start on these slides, uh, flip over the one that said page two at the bottom, audit opinion. A qualified opinion was issued, typically a, an unqualified opinion is what, what you would want, but this has nothing to do with numbers being wrong, but for as long as I can remember, the county has elected not to hire an actuary in regards to some other post-employment benefits that I believe are outside of TCDRS, I think they're through Transamerica. So, in order to, to comply with the standard, we have to pay an actuary, and then we would have to make some adjustments on the financial statements, and like I said, for as long as I can remember, the, the county has elected not to do this. So, with the exception of this one issue, uh, the opinion basically says that the financial statements are accurate and correct after a few audit adjustments. So, um, if the county ever did want to, uh, correct this to a unqualified opinion, you'd have to, you know, pay, pay for that actuary report to be done, which really wouldn't provide any value, so that's the stance that the county's always taken on that.
So you're saying we don't get any actual value at additional money by hiring an actuary?
Well, um, not really, I mean, GAZB seventy-five, which I think, well, slide on the next slide, it's a new governmental standard where, so other post-employment benefits are benefits provided to retirees, the county pays a premium, and I believe it's like a supplemental debt policy. And so, what you would pay them to do is to do a whole bunch of actuarial calculations, and then we put liability, which I don't think it would be very much, but, um, so if you're fine with the, with the qualification, then it's really not gonna provide any value.
Qualification permits in any way?
Um, no, I mean, it, it could raise some questions, but, um, you know, I don't think it would really much require an explanation of why you've chosen to do that. The other one, GAZB sixty-eight, uh, that one, you don't have to pay the actuaries, it's done through TCDRS. And so, it's the same type of thing, just requires to go through and make an adjustment for the, the benefit liability and related other accounts, so, um, that one's a bigger deal, and so if you didn't, if that was an issue, I would probably say so, but probably not a too big deal on this.
Okay.
Okay. The next slide, page three, this is really just kind of a table of contents for that, for that big audit report. And so, instead of, instead of going through, um, the whole report, this is just kinda give you a, kind of a breakdown of what's what if you wanted to go through it. Jump to the next one, page four, uh, like I mentioned before, GAZB seventy-five did come into effect for this last year, and it really didn't have any impact since, since there was no adjustment made, there was no actuary report, et cetera. Not really much, need to spend much time on that. The next slide of page five at the bottom, starting in on the numbers here. This represents total assets and liabilities of governmental activities, and what that means is, this excludes business-type activities, which is the EMS, the airport, the golf course, and Hermling Water Works. So, also in addition to that, the county kinda maintains two sets of books, one fund accounting and one full accrual for your PPNE and debt and all that book. This represents the full set of books, um, so you can see the, the trend here from two thousand fourteen to eighteen, the blue bar, there are total assets, and the red, the red bar is liabilities. And so, you can see the, the assets decreased from thirty-four million down to thirty-one. What, what composes most of that thirty-one million is nine point six million in cash and roughly twenty million in property plant equipment. That's your infrastructure, equipment, buildings, all that. The main reason it decreased from, uh, from thirty-four to thirty-one, there was depreciation expense of about one point, one point six million, and there weren't very many capital expenditures, so that depreciation's gonna bring down your, your net value of PPNE. Also last year, in connection with, um, GAZB sixty-eight, which is the pension liability, there's a deferred outflows of resources, which is, it's a calculation that the actuaries do. There was a deferred outflow of two point three million, and that basically went, uh, went, went down about two million dollars, so really, uh, as in a cash position, the cash stayed roughly the same, uh, really the, the deferred outflow item was really, it's not, it's not a cash transaction, it's really nothing that, that you can control, it's just a, it's an actuarial calculation, which changed. The liabilities, the red line, um, most of that twenty-one million, I think roughly twelve of it is your bonds related to the law enforcement center that were issued several years back. There's also a liability of about seven million dollars, which is, uh, taxes collected in advance, that's really just any, any tax money that's paid, uh, before the end of the year, that you have to wait, wait to recognize it until the, so really the, if you take off that seven million, most of your liabilities are the bonds, which are about twelve million dollars. If you flip to the next one, page six, this is your total assets and liabilities, um, of the business-type activities, which again is the airport, EMS, Hermling Water Works, and the golf course. See, the assets are roughly five point five million, up a little bit from last year. What, what makes up that five point five million is two point two million in cash and then equipment, property plant equipment of three point one million. I'll talk a little bit more about, about these business-type activities when we get to the incoming expenses. If you flip to the next, the next page, net position and total governmental activities. Net position is another word for fund balance at the government-wide level, so if this, this were a business, four part businesses would be your equity, your retained earnings, it's called net position here in these statements. So you can see the, the, the trend from two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen, it's been declining, a lot of that has to do with, um, depreciation, which I believe is an item that's, you know, budgets are based on fund statements, which is cash in and cash out, um, appreciation expenses roughly one point five to two million each year, and for the last several years, expenses have exceeded revenue by roughly that depreciation amount on this, on this, at the fund level. So there is, there is a little bit of a decline there, you're still sitting at ten point one, uh, million dollars in, in net position or equity. If you wanna kinda keep this, so let's see, well, go to the, go to the next slide, um, this is the net position, uh, for those business-type activities. They don't have much debt, so roughly the assets, uh, the assets are gonna roughly offset the liabilities, so, you know, they have roughly five point five million in assets, and then they have a few capital leases, and then most of the, what's left over is in net position. The increase from two thousand sixteen to seventeen was, uh, the airport was moved from, was inside the general fund for a long time, and then kinda things changed, and, uh, it was moved over to a, to a business-type activity, and there's been some tech stock trends involved there, that's what caused it to go from three point five to five point one from sixteen to seventeen. Slide nine kinda goes along, you wanna, you wanna have slide seven next to it. So you've got ten point one million in net position, and we're required to break out that ten point one million by invested in capital assets, which is net of debt, unrestricted and restricted. So you can see the, you've got seven point four million in net position invested in capital assets, which is your, all of your PPNE, less cumulative depreciation, less related debt. So, that's the biggest chunk, which is, which is pretty common, you've got two point two million unrestricted net position, and then you've got three hundred and ninety-three thousand in restricted, and that represents debt service, that's cash that's set aside, uh, to pay the, to pay the bonds, that's what that is. So this just kinda breaks out of your ten point one million in net position, one of the three categories, that's what that is. Flipping to the next one, this is kind of the same thing, but for the, for the business-type activities. Most of theirs is, is, well, it's a little bit closer to half, you have three point one million, represents property plant equipment, and then unrestricted, uh, unrestricted is two point three. Flipping on to page fourteen, governmental revenues by type. This just kinda shows what your revenues are composed of, the general revenue, which is the red line, roughly eleven point four million is, uh, mostly property and other taxes. And then, the program, which is the blue line, three million, that's charges for services, grants, other things that, uh, generates revenue that are, that are more, um, service, service-related. One thing, oh, I'll touch on that in a few minutes. So then, the next, the next slide breaks down the general revenue, so you can see the, the property taxes is roughly, property and sales taxes, about ten million, uh, fines and oratures, about five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, and, uh, six hundred and ninety-six thousand in other miscellaneous. So you can see the, the decline from two thousand fifteen to sixteen, it was up about twelve to thirteen, and then I think a lot of that has to do with, um, oil and gas, uh, appraisal value, stuff like that, so there's been a little bit of a drop-off in the, in the, in the taxes, and then this is kinda going along with the same thing, so if you work at slide thirteen, this is the revenue by type for the business-type activities, which again is the EMS, golf course, uh, airport, and waterworks. Typically, in a perfect world, a business-type activity generates its own, its own income, like a, like a business would. But, you can see the, the red line, all, all the way across here, the red line represents taxes, and so the, the county's been allocating a portion of the, uh, federal war room over to these to cover, essentially cover the deficit in these funds to continue, uh, to operate, and so, in two thousand eighteen, one point four million dollars of the federal taxes was sent, um, over to these business-type activities to help fund them, and that's kinda why that, on that previous one on page, on page twelve, um, you can see, these are, this is the, in the governmental funds, along with economic factors, which also been, if you look at the red line on thirteen, one million in two thousand fourteen, a million fifty-eight in fifteen, one point three million of taxes in sixteen, one point four in seventeen and eighteen. So that's a pretty large chunk of the, um, of the property taxes that are going to, across the board, you know, the airport, the EMS, those are the two big ones, airport and EMS, um, like I said, in a perfect world, those would be able to self, self-sustain a little, a little bit better, um, and so a lot of those operations are essentially being funded by the, by the.
One five another, down to two forty-eight in two thousand eighteen, what's the difference there, any?
Uh, I believe.
Cause they jumped from sixteen to seventeen, and seventeen went back to eighteen, went down. Possibly.
I think it might be grand.
I think it was that text diagram that we got for the airport and the hangar.
I was thinking about sixteen. Yeah.
Okay. But essentially, just to be fair, these same services that, they should maybe self-support a little better, and, and I'm assuming you're basing that on other audits that y'all do across the state, or?
Well, yeah, and just the, the nature, uh, the nature of a business-type activity, like, a good example is, uh, like the water, water department, you know, they're charged, they're charging for water customers, and that's really kinda what a business-type activity is. You're more like a regular business, where you're, whatever you're, whatever you're doing, should roughly, you know, cover your, all your expenses.
So, it might be, in the future, maybe you would wanna think about charging more for the purchase of individuals that use it? Is that?
That's possibly more figuring out, um, you know, I know the county took on the, uh, EMS, I don't know who was operating it before, or I can't remember the ins and outs of why that was, I think, I don't know if it was the city. Um, expenses, is it worth evaluating?
We see Medicaid, Medicare paying less and less.
That's, healthcare's always gonna be an issue.
But they, they are almost half, bring around at least half of what their cost is to have them, super important services, but.
I'm not saying that's, I was just wondering if that out, that, uh.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if you knew, on average, across the state, or other entities that y'all, uh, actually audit that are somewhat like ours, that does, counties that do have EMS or cities, uh, that, if you've seen them actually pay more on, for themselves, business-type activities, rather than being supported by the law taxes?
We honestly don't, uh, create EMS, but, uh, most of the other, the other type, whether it's water or airport, most of those tend to, uh, support themselves for the most part, and maybe have it transferred from the general fund or something like that if they need a little supplement or whatever, but I just wanted to note that, you know, of your total taxes, one point four million is supporting those four, uh, those four funds.
Yes.
Uh, slide fourteen, like I said, the accounting for any governmental activity maintains basically two sets of books, so the, the net position slide ended in ten million, it's kind of a decline, this is the same thing on the fund, on the fund statements. This is essentially the same graph, except it does not include, there's no property plant equipment, there's no debt recorded here, so this is strictly just basically cash in, cash out, and fund balance, um, has declined, it declined, there was a nine hundred thousand dollar loss in my fund statements, um, for two thousand eighteen. And that's really what dropped it from three point eight to three hundred, and really just basically expenses exceeded revenue by roughly, roughly nine hundred thousand dollars. So this is, in the funds, this is after the, the one point four been allocated over to the, the business type. Uh, slide fifteen, this basically just splits out that three million on the previous slide, you've got three major funds, the general fund, which is always a major fund, road and bridge, just all your infrastructure, roadwork, and then your law enforcement, uh, debt service fund, or the, all the bonding, I mean, that's a major fund, and then the non-major funds are all your other small culture and recreation type stuff, grant funds, probation departments. This just kinda, kinda shows where the fund balance is concerned, you can see, back in two thousand fourteen, there's a big, big gap between the, uh, the major, three major funds versus the small ones, and so the, really the, the general fund is the one that's, that's kind of been, uh, declining over the last few years. Um, next slide, page sixteen, as I mentioned, that other document that you've got that's a little bit thinner, it's a required communication, if we had, uh, any issues with management or disagreements, difficult, anything like that, uh, major accounting pronouncements, we'd be required to communicate those to you in that document, we did not have any, any issues, uh, or anything to communicate, that was, that's just the standard, uh, standard document, really just saying we didn't have any issues completing the audit. The last slide, one thing I did wanna point out, summary of audit first findings, we did have a few internal controls, uh, deficiencies that we wanted to point out. Were required to, under governmental standards, um, those are defined as controlled deficiency, significant deficiency, or material weakness, and we have to categorize those based on our, on how we feel. So we had one material weakness, uh, in internal control, and if you wanted to flip to page sixty-five, uh, of the big document, the state audit report, um, in performing the audit, it was, um, I think it was in, in one of the main. In performing the audit, it was, I think it was in, in one of the main cash accounts, there was a, they had to make an adjustment for a material audit adjustment because there was an issue with the cash reconciliation that was performed. And then, I don't know the ins and outs, maybe it was reconciled too early and then they had to make an adjustment and the balance was not corrected, it was, an issue was made to find balance to get the cash reconciliation to work. And so since the dollar amount was larger, we had to go ahead and acknowledge that. And so this, this schedule of findings and responses basically just kind of outlines each issue. And then Angela and Nelda have have, have discussed the corrective actions. And so really, it's just a matter of, on this first one for the cash, you know, I think waiting until all the transactions are reported, someone reconcile the cash account, and then have someone review it and make sure the balance ties and that nothing got left behind. It's really just kind of an oversight. So, but due to the, the dollar amount, it did need to be addressed. The others, we, we categorized as significant deficiencies, and I'll just kind of summarize through those. Really, it's, it kind of goes along with the same thing. Journal entries are made to the general ledger in, I guess, really two different offices. Just kind of making sure one handles what the other's doing, need to be a little bit more oversight on, you know, after a month is closed, going back in and making sure all the accounts are still tied out, what they need to do and everything to reconcile. In most cases, the county auditor's office will kind of be the, kind of the gatekeeper for all this. And so really just communication between treasurer's office, auditor's office, treasurer's office does their thing and then the other office will need to be involved in, in oversight and making sure that, that someone's not correcting a mistake, someone else has already thought they corrected. Just mainly just communication, stuff like that, to make sure everything's as accurate as possible. There was one bank account that had not been reconciled during the year. I don't know that that's really caused any major issue, but you know, when you're dealing with public funds, it's always good to make sure that any office that has a bank account, you know, there's tons of banks, bank accounts. Just making sure that all of those are reconciled and ideally sent in for review, again, to the auditor's office to make sure. So it's going to be mainly making sure everyone that's responsible for bank accounts, reconciling them monthly, sending them in timely so that, so that everyone can, you know, look at them and make sure, make sure everything's being recorded basically. Cause if you don't, if you don't reconcile cash and it's easy to miss, miss transactions and that's arguably one of the most important functions is, is cash accounts. There was one, one other issue, one issue with property plant and equipment. Again, I think it's, it's more just communication of, you know, when inventory is taken of all the equipment by department. There've been issues with, maybe something was retired, but maybe, maybe put in storage or maybe a vehicle put in a yard somewhere and then not actually disposed of. Mainly just communication when, you know, when Angela, whoever, when assets taken off the bug here in storage and walk off or, you know, really be, you know, sent to auction, stuff like that. So really just kind of making sure your, all your ducks are in a row, you get rid of assets, I think is the, is the main thing. And then the last thing, we randomly selected some checks for testing of the dual signature internal control. And there were three on the check image from the bank that did not have two signatures. I know that's a, can be kind of a hassle sometimes, but it's a good control and really just need to make sure that anytime there's a check run, two people are, two people are signing that. And, you know, sometimes the bank will call and, and say, well, there's not two signatures, but really, that's fine, that's good they do that, but really the control is here. And so two people here aren't seeing that, and then the bank calls up one person that signed it and says, can I release this check? They're really doing, the control failed because only one person saw the check. So really just making sure every check has two signatures. That way, that way everything's out there and visible whenever disbursements are made. That was really the, kind of one of the highlights on the, on the financial side. We, we appreciate you and y'all about it and working with Angela and really just, I know y'all are kind of going through some, some changes and just kind of on that internal control thing, it's just, I've already visited with Angela about it and they're planning on just kind of tightening down the policies and procedures, make sure everybody's on the same page, really I think it's just communication type stuff. Maybe a little bit more communication between, between some offices and things like that, so. That was really all I had, unless anyone had any questions.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Some things we'll look at.
Can you also give me a PDF for it?
Yeah, she did this last night, I haven't had a chance to. So I'll look at it.
Y'all didn't have to accept it.
Okay.
All right, well, consider a little line item transfers and budget amendments.
Have they changed them?
Yes.
Budget amendments, I think there's just the one budget amendment, y'all just have one?
You just get one.
For Hermling Water Works, there's a budget amendment to put into place the money in the lines for the operations manager, whenever one is hired. And it is to go from June on, so if you're looking at the amounts on there, that is just for, it's for seven months of payroll at sixteen forty-two an hour. And all of the fringe and medical insurance is also in case they have family medical insurance, that's what it would be. Sell allowance, I put sell allowance on there because typically it's fifty dollars a month for sell allowance. However, I don't know if y'all would prefer, what the person would prefer to do an allowance or to provide a cell phone service to, from Verizon, to have a separate cell phone. So that would be up to y'all, but the line is still a segment, it'd be forty to ten because it's actually called cellular in there. So either way, that's fine, we would just need to know if we need to set it in the counter at Verizon. The total amount going into Hermling Water Works, all of the lines, is thirty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-three eighty-five, to finish out from June two thousand nineteen to December two thousand nineteen.
And that comes from one of Hermling's accounts.
Yes, that comes from the Hermling Water Works Reserve account in Tech School. And then there's, I only have one line on transfer. I report here, shows a whole lot more than that. I think she might have mixed up. Line on transfer for precinct three, machine hire, sixteen thousand six hundred of raw material and construction, three monthly son maintainer. That's the only one that I have on here. I think she, when she entered in these other ones, she must have put up the wrong date or something. Do you have any other ones? Cause I showed two more on line on transfers in the system. Does it all.
Do you have any questions that can be accepted for line of transfers and budget amendments?
And then, again, accounts payable, two to the table.
The accounts payable for this time is one hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred and one eighty-three. Plus, this includes the past due Keith tire service invoice to be printed today, I guess we'll receive it here in a little bit, for two thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. And then bi-weekly and semi-monthly payroll, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and seven forty-six.